I will call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll. Coulterman.
Present.
Streisand.
Here.
Tanyas.
Here.
Singleton.
Eric.
Morgan.
You're here.
Wilkin.
Here.
Alright, um, our consent agenda consists of the first six items. Move to approve, second. We have a motion and a second, and then for a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, six zero.
Alright, first administrative item is consideration of the revised cemetery board rules and regulations. Who would like to start us off?
I.
One, one second.
We probably need to have them, just a brief overview of them, either from, what about, we have some distinguished members of our cemetery board here with us. So Jeff or Greg, I don't know who wants to get up and just generally introduce and then let note, let the council know kind of what the changes were.
That's what I was gonna ask, is this a, this isn't a marked up version?
No.
So.
It, and the reason being is, the reason somehow it didn't load into our iPads with the new version here that we sent out? Remember we emailed and said that there's a new version?
Hey, Greg, how about you tell us your version while you're here? The version that you have, tell us.
My version should be the same one that you had.
Well, I think we have a two, I think we had two drafts, we may have mixed up the drafts and the packet, so.
If you wanna take us through like the changes that is in the new version from the older version, that would be happy, that's what we'd like to do.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, my name's Greg Zest, everybody, I'm at seventeen sixty eight Kerrakay Boulevard. I've been on the cemetery board for over thirty years. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you council members, the new ones, and the incumbents for serving the city of Seward. It's, it's a great pleasure to have you doing this work. In your packet you received, I guess you don't get a packet, maybe electronically, you received a total of fifteen pages of cemetery rules and regulations. We are not gonna talk about all fifteen of those, I'm sure you're relieved tonight. We're only gonna talk to, about a couple of major revisions. And first of all would be the different sizes of margins. Now, the margin is the foundation around as a monument in the cemetery. The version, there's fifteen pages, we had, we had them ranging from six to five to four, so we wanted to get it, um, so that they're all uniform. So we're stating that they have to be at least a minimum, no less, no less than a minimum four inches margin around a monument. And that helps our cemetery caretakers and keep, keep the cemetery looking good and so they don't have to trim quite as much, but get them all a little bit closer to the, to the monuments. So that's, that's the first one. The second one, um, is one that has been discussed or it's been in the city council minutes since two thousand and seven. And one that we're now printing, having print, printed for the general rules and regulations. You should find it under number fifteen, the last one, in the general rules and regulations.
Hey Greg, one second.
Yes.
We're gonna have, hand out hard copies of this, so make sure everyone has the same document.
So just the first page, you can pass those down, I'm guessing, Jessica.
Ah, got you.
This is the first page from the one that we updated with your, the packet item in, loaded on your iPad, is not the final version that we sent to you yesterday.
Alright.
And so me and Greg met yesterday and we made the cleanups and the updates. We recognize that an item that you guys, so, so the members that were on here a while ago, so John and Jessica, Councilmember Wilkin, remember when we redid the temporary markers and John and Kent are guys that worked out, they came up with this temporary ones, instead of the metal ones that sat like this, they looked more like a monument and then we affixed it to the concrete base. It's easier for maintenance and things like that. Somehow, in our transition to building this fifteen page document from fif-, this existed as fifteen different documents before. And so now we're putting it all in one, so nobody has to chase down the ninety-eight version of the first edition and the two thousand and four edition and the second edition. It's all in one document, you adjust anything, you just touch one document, they're all there. That's one of the big changes and purposes. But we somehow forgot temporary markers and that was such a big thing and they worked really hard to come up with that, we wanted to make sure it got in there.
So that is now added into the general rules and regulations?
We'll put back in there, which it was already in there before, but it's number thirteen.
Okay, got it.
The one that Mr. Zestka is referring to will be number fifteen on the page that was just handed to.
So on our original one, they were bullets, not numbered?
Yep.
Got it.
Got it?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, is this, as I mentioned, this started in two thousand and seven in which, um, the city council decided they were going to continue the paving, a dedicated street, Four Street, in Seward, three, into the cemetery to connect with the loop on, in, in the fourth edition. And they decided they were going to connect this loop. Well, since the veterans memorial is in that area, they made it wide to prevent, to, to have the possibility of, of parking for Memorial Day ceremonies, so that people could park there and attend the ceremony. They also wanted to extend it all the way through and connect Waverly Road, which it was not before. The cemetery did, did not extend it and onto Waverly Road from that area. So they, they presented it to us, the cemetery board, and we agreed to let that road be paved, but with one, one exception. When, it was not, there was not to be a gate there, and if there was a gate, then it would be closed. Only on three occasions would it be open. Memorial Day weekend, a large funeral in that area, or the, the removal of heavy snow. Other than that, it was going to remain closed. Before the, the, the gate was, was built by, by city workers. There was a gate on, on the south, as you enter off of Four Street, and then there was the gate that's at Waverly Road, that was also built by, by city, by the city. As well as a bottom block to the south on Four Street. On the east side of the street, there is a sign that says, "Not a Through Street." We did this because of the fact that residents in that area found a great amount of traffic going through that area. Not only was it just traffic going to the cemetery, it was traffic going through. Farm trucks, tractors, construction equipment, and that also caused litter to be in that area.
Greg, there was another item. It was a lot of it too, it was because of traffic issues coming off of the highway. And then the other reason was they didn't want it to become a drag strip, and that's why the gate.
Correct, thank you. Some funeral processions, not every funeral home, but some funeral homes use the Four Street entrance because of the traffic on, on the highway to bring a funeral procession into the cemetery for safety reasons. Not everybody traveling on Highway fifteen is worthy or is remembers the speed limit that goes through there, and sometimes they're distracted. Okay, so the, the only way that the cemetery board would allow that road to be paved all the way through is if a gate was placed at Waverly Road and, and, um, Four Street. So we went on record and your body, city council at that time, decided that that's, that would, they would abide by that. Well, the road, Waverly Road was closed for some time, as you well know. You approved the paving of Waverly Road and that long paving project had the gate remaining open because there wasn't any traffic on Waverly Road, but that would allow for the construction people to go in to get their necessary pieces of equipment as well as other things to take care of that road. Once the paving of Waverly Road was completed, that gate was to be closed. But it wasn't. Because it wasn't, it wasn't in our document. It was only in the city council minutes from two thousand and seven.
So this is in addition to the rules and regs that currently is not in the rules and regs?
Correct.
Okay.
The cemetery board asked us, asked the city workers, in which we have, we have very dedicated, hardworking men at cemetery, they're doing a tremendous job. But they, we asked them, we'd like to know a count. Let's get a traffic count of cars coming through on that road, on Four Street. Well, it took a little while to find a counter without somebody sitting out there with a clicker, but we got a counter and at one time, the last counting, the count that I heard was well over fifty cars going through.
In a day?
One week's time.
In a week?
Yes.
Okay. So we are, we are asking for the, for you, the council, to consider the, the rules and the rule and reg that we have not had in print, print, but we had it in, from the city council approval from two thousand and seven to be in print and to be understood that that gate will be closed only with three, three events. Memorial Day, a large funeral in the area, as well as for the removal of, of snow. Initially too, we had talked about that that gate could be opened if there was a natural disaster or something that we needed to get through that area for emergency, emergency medical equipment. That would of course, and take care of a tornado or something to that effect. But we did not have that word into that rule or regulation. So I, I am here to answer, to, to answer any questions that you might have regarding either one of those two items or if you saw something glaring in the, in the fifteen pages of rules and regs.
Thanks Greg for the synopsis. Any questions or comments from Greg at this time? I'm guessing we'll have other people that will wanna speak on this issue, so we can always circle back if you think of a question.
I guess one question I have Greg, so I'm the new liaison to your board. I haven't actually been in actual meeting yet. Did the board vote on this, all of this, that the board, and the board is unanimous on this?
We meet quarterly, for, for, for all of you, in case you have a burning desire to be on the cemetery board. We meet quarterly. So four times a year, we have a board that consists of six members. We have a new member that's coming on in, at our next meeting in March.
Who's that?
That will be, um, Ben, Ben Hughes. Roger Glawitz was on for many years. Roger has since relocated to Lincoln and he's resigned from the cemetery board. Any other questions?
Are there any, Jeff, are you on the board?
Uh, I am now, yes.
Are there any other board members here?
I, I don't, I don't think we voted though Greg, if I recall. I don't think we, I think we tabled that because of, we found out the city passed that back in two thousand and seven, wasn't for table. So I think we tabled that until we found out for sure. I might be mistaken, but that's, that's my thought, yeah.
We'll reserve the right to call you back up if you have, if you have any questions.
I'm here for, I'm here for the evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, just speaking to what I'm already sensing is going on. This, this is the number one reason why I requested that this item, no matter what we do, is in the rules and regs. We can't rely as a staff with turnover in committees and with council members and administration. It took me and Greg just tracking this down with Derek, a number of months, trying to like pinpoint what conversation was what and then locate and realize it's in the minutes and it's actually in a, the discussion is in multiple meetings, and John, I think you were there. It's in multiple meetings before it's set out. It's also one of, if you ever wanna read some really funny min- minutes, where people are a little chippy, it's that set of minutes. And so it's there, but it doesn't exist as an ordinance.
Right.
It doesn't exist as a code. It doesn't exist as a rule and reg. And the way that we've been updating rules and regs for all these different boards, you can see now, I have an updated date listed on here. If you go to the last page on the new version, it shows all the amendments that were made to it, so you can have a point in time reference to go find the minutes very quickly of the council and see this discussion we're having here. And so that's why we put it all in one, we always mess with one document so you know you have the right version. Because it's, it's been this kind of back and forth thing, and so now, however we do it, it will be noted in minutes and it will be noted in the rules and regs and then it exists there and it will be followed up on because I'm sure the cemetery board will wanna review these at least once a year. We deal with all of our other stuff for most of our other boards and commissions, we take a look at the rules and regs once a year at least. And if there's something on there that, that trips their trigger and they wanna have a conversation with the council or their liaison, that's their opportunity to do so. So we know this will continue to be caught, or if something else becomes sour, we can work on it that's in here. But letting it exist in the way that it was just defined, I think it was just a simple motion.
Yeah, it was just be, then one of the biggest reasons was they didn't wanna have a drag strip, that's all it was.
Yeah.
Is it all open then?
It was at the beginning.
And one, one major, if I may, don't interject, one major, um, line item here, when Waverly Road was paved now, you'll notice a drop in, when you're at the intersection of Four Street and Waverly Road,
There's a turn lane.
You'll notice a rise there. Waverly Road goes down, I mean, it goes down to Waverly Road. That was always level, um, with the, with the gate, as you, as you see it today. The second thing that we need to point out, eventually, the city is going to be bringing housing units on the north side of Waverly Road into that area to be, to be developed. Well, it so coincides with that, where that entrance is to that housing unit, it lines up directly with the gate at Waverly Road. So if that gate remains open, you think we have a thoroughfare now or had one, it's gonna really be a thoroughfare for people to cut through there to get from their house to any, anyplace else in Seward.
What do you, Greg, what do you think about this putting, cause I know we can regulate the speed. We can have it lowered, each gate open, but lower the speed limit right to that little area.
I don't think it's gonna do any good.
But we have officers that can patrol that.
Well, we have officers too, that, they, they've got a lot of stuff to patrol here in Seward. And we have, we have already a rule and regulations that we're allowing ten miles an hour in the cemetery.
Right, but I mean, that's anywhere in town, you know, that the officers, that's their duty, you know, to main, uh, you know, do their job as far as maintaining and ensure the speed limits are followed.
But that, you know, really, the Four, Four Street in the cemetery is not a dedicated City of Seward street. It is a cemetery street that so happens to be called Four Street because of the, the way the cemetery was lined up originally.
And what's the width of the street?
Super wide.
Regulate, I mean, it's, it's the same as regulated street size.
Yeah, it's wide.
It's over thirty-two feet, ma? So it wouldn't need all the criteria?
Oh, it's, it's, it's all regulation.
We had additional room for parking, wasn't that the original intent? Was assuming you'd have events and you wanna be able to access for parking, so yeah, it's, it's more than wide enough.
Yes, it is.
We have, do, do other people know?
Yeah, I believe so. Uh, if there's anything else for Greg for now, otherwise we can always call you back if we need to, thank Greg. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak, just state your name and address with the clerk's record and fill out that sheet when you get a chance.
My name is John Brandl, my address is three three five East Robertson in Seward. I'm also a city employee and myself and Kent Seleski are the two that manage, maintain and, and take care of the three cemeteries here in Seward. We started this very contentious battle, I guess, three years ago when we started and we took over for the other people who were not taking care of the cemetery and, um, we have no common sense reason that this gate should be closed. We have heard from many families who visit their loved ones, um, that the gate needs to be open. We have made improvements to the veteran section with new flags proven out there. Been improvements to that area to encourage people to come out to the veteran section and to visit the cemetery. Um, all improvements with the temporary markers and just the general maintenance of the cemetery. We want people to come out to the cemetery, we encourage people to come out to the cemetery. And in fact, it's a safety issue for us when the gate is closed because people do come, Google Earth or whatever, if you're not from Seward, um, or just coming to Four Street, then they get upset and you can tell they're upset, so then they turn into the cemetery, go down the gravel roads and they are certainly not doing ten mile an hour. So when we're out there maintaining or on our mowers or gentleman like Dennis who's, you know, out there several times a day visiting family, their monuments, that, there's cars flying through there. But when the gate is open, they don't use it as a shortcut to get to Highway fifteen, um, so.
I wanna just make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, is they're coming to the gate, they're seeing that it's closed.
Correct.
And then they're coming in that narrow side gate?
No, they're then turning, there's two entrances, both gravel, that have come off of Four Street to go west to Highway fifteen.
Okay.
And so then they curve through there, which are curvy roads, to either go out the north. There's another north gate that's very small.
Yes, they go out the north gate.
Yeah, that literally almost clips your marriage, you go out, just old school gate, and then of course, or they go all the way past the office to get out to Highway fifteen, and we see cars from out of town cars. We've seen construction vehicles pulling long trailers going through there, cause they can't make the turn around there. And I realize there is a, it says no through street before that, a half a block before that, but no one notices that sign. And it is, as they say, it's a regulated street as far as width wise, it's a nice street. Um, and to clear a couple of things up, we did do a traffic count, um, and it was, it was actually low sixties for a whole week, so divide that by seven, that's how many cars you're getting a day through there.
And that was when Waverly was, when did we do it?
Was done, open, was good. Um, they did put up a stop sign, the city crews put up a stop sign for there, just like a regular, any other street, so you have people stopping. Um, and even the high school to the south of us there, we thought, okay, is it gonna turn into a racetrack? Not once have we seen, and Kent and I are there forty hours a week, and we would be the first to say, this is crazy, we're trying to get our mowers across to veterans and we're gonna get killed. Never have we seen any cars flying through there, it's not a racetrack. It's not used excessively, we're not seeing any, of course, construction vehicles, um, large construction vehicles or combines or tractors going through there, cause there are no fields there anymore. Twenty-five years ago, sure, there was, the new start of the cemetery was a field there. I've lived in Seward for twenty-five years and I remember that cornfield's still there. But now that that's all pasture, soon to be or eventually, I guess, you know, a cemetery. There's no large vehicles going through, in fact, a combine couldn't fit through the gate there. So the traffic count showed that the traffic is low, we don't have any trash problem whatsoever. We have trash cans right inside the cemetery, people use those respectively to throw things away from the cemetery. We don't have any trash, we have people that stop in that parking area, maybe have a lunch or even the, um, I guess called a handy van or the, the transport van for the, um, elderly homes that are on Four Street always are coming through there, and we've talked to that lady and the other people that drive for them. And they are very appreciative when the gate was open. Cause we didn't know when Kent and I started that this was actually a whole city council vote. Years ago, we just, it was open when we started and we thought, okay, we'll just keep it open, we didn't know any better. Until finally, it was realized that it was actually a city council vote. Um, but during that time, over these last city, or cemetery board meetings, um, the cemetery board unanimously voted, before they even found out that it was a city council vote, to keep the gate open for three years and see what happened and see if that development on the north, you know, along with the, uh, exercise center, the fitness center, and then the housing that starts to come west, if it does turn into a major problem. Um, but from what I understand, obviously they're starting to, the far east will be the center north of the middle school and the housing's gonna come west. Well, how long is it gonna take for housing to reach all the way Highway fifteen? And it does line up with one of the driveways that are already there on the Waverly and there already is a turn lane painted onto Waverly to come through that gate, so.
Yeah, I, I saw the turn lane.
I could, I couldn't even see in twenty years when the housing, cause it's gonna be more convenient for the people. That's another north entrance. There's a fire hydrant right there on the corner. So if that housing is there, are you gonna block that fire hydrant with the gate from the fire department to be able to hook up to that to, to put a fire out right across the Waverly Road? I would hope not. So we as workers out there who see it every day and deal with the cars, the people, the traffic, the, the families that come, and you've also heard from funeral home directors, including Mr. Volzke, that he gets complaints from his families that he serves, that the gate is closed. Um, and they want it open because it's more convenient for them to come visit to the cemetery. So as somebody who works out there every day, five days a week, we have no issues whatsoever and it would greatly be a huge convenience for the citizens of Seward and us and anybody involved, family coming from out of town, to keep that gate open.
Any questions from the council?
A follow-up for me, John, just so the council's fully aware. All the comments, whatever that you made tonight, these were things you've shared with cemetery board when you guys, and you guys attend all of their meetings as well.
Absolutely.
And so you guys, there's nothing, you didn't drop a bomb on anybody tonight in regards to your guys' feelings on this?
No, we've been very vocal about.
And it's just been this discussion back and forth between the board and the staff and just in general, some of the public have had in, input on this, but this isn't something that anyone hasn't heard before in regards to you guys' discussion back and forth.
Correct.
Okay.
I can tell you, this is the only cemetery real, I mean, there's always some issues with, in the past, with making sure everything was maintained and looks great and that's, it's been looking amazing.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, um, but as far as comments from the public, I think is the, whether that street's open or not is the only thing I hear from people and so that's why it was important that when I talked to Greg about this, is that we have it, have this discussion because we need to be able to give people the definitive answer of what's, what to expect because it's not for the public, if they think it's gonna be open and it's closed or, you know, they need to be able to know what the expectations are. And visually, it looks like a streak that goes through. You know, in hindsight, I kinda wish if the intent was to not have it be a through street, they would've used like brick or, or blacktop or something that would've matched the interior paths in the cemetery so it looks like you're, you're crossing into a cemetery, I still pose, and now visually it looks like you're on a street with a cemetery on either side. I mean, there are gates, I get, I get that, but, um, it's just, I know I've had people make comments to me about it and I don't have a good, I don't have a clear answer because I know there's feelings, you know, both, both ways, so we would just like some clarification so we know what to tell people and people can, will know what to expect cause especially when you're talking about moving people through a town, you know, the, the infrastructure and, and that just needs to be understood by people so they know what to expect when they're going down a street like that. Any other questions at this time, if not?
I, I guess, I did have a question about, um, that road that goes through that has the gate.
Sure.
Um, it kinda reminds me of, I'm gonna use the example of O Street and Wauka and then you have the Catholic cemetery on the other side. There's fencing there.
Correct.
When you go down O Street. From your perspective, is that something that we could perhaps add if we decided to open the road so we could maintain the integrity of a cemetery, if that makes sense?
Absolutely, we've actually discussed that with Mr. Butcher and, and that is, that is certainly would be a plan if somebody felt that they wanted more of the distinction between the road and the cemetery, that we would have no problem and the city certainly could do that, I mean, we could do the fence. And the city certainly could do that, I mean, we could do the fence ourselves or have it hired or whatever. To put a fence on the east end, left side of Fourth Street. Um, just a simple either a wrought iron fence that's there along Waverly or a simple chain link fence that goes on the south side of the new addition, um, to the east side of Fourth Street. That we could do that to make that distinction of, um, the street versus the cemetery. So that would not be an issue, would still have egress in with gates and, and whatnot. But, um, it would give that more of a closed area to the cemetery if need be and could be an easy solution to that.
And again, ultimately, all decisions about the cemetery, because the way we've set up the system, everything comes down to the council. Because that's how the system is set up now. But I would say a decision like that should also go back to the cemetery.
Hundred percent, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand all of the things that we think about.
If I could just make one other point, as far as the people living on Fourth Street, if, if there is anybody that's complained about the traffic in the past or whatever, at the three years Kent has been there, we have never, we've gotten complaints of other things. If somebody likes the rose bushes or whatever, the landscaping right there by the gate. Um, but as far as traffic, we've never received a complaint whatsoever of too much traffic on Fourth Street because the gate being open, because it was open for quite a while. So if somebody has heard that complaint, we have not as a cemetery. And we obviously get people knocking on our door at the office with different concerns, but that has never been one.
So my question, do you feel it'd be safer for the public to enter from that Waverly Road, say senior citizens? Getting off the busy highway, being able to have access from Columbia and coming down that way versus coming in off the highway?
Absolutely. We, um, we've heard about high school kids that, you know, coming down Waverly Road, you know, they got to Highway fifteen to go down to, which you, you wanna, your teenager turning onto a fifty-five mile an hour, sixty-five mile an hour highway to get to their high school, that they can take Fourth Street to get to. So it's much safer, not only for the citizens using Fourth Street, but as I said before, it's safer for us because people aren't cutting through the cemetery because they can't use Fourth Street. And that's when that ten mile an hour, I know ten mile an hour is awful slow, but when you're standing on the side of the road, you know, weed weapon or you're a family member, you know, standing by the graveside, anything over ten mile an hour is pretty darn fast. So it's, for us, it's, it's a huge safety issue.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward at this time? Welcome.
My name is Dennis Kramer, I live at eight oh eight Fifth Street in Milford, Nebraska. I have, uh, quite a few people that are buried in Seward Cemetery. Uh, I, uh, I visit it, uh, twice a day. Uh, the gentleman had stated about, uh, when the gate is open, uh, I'm out there, I'm a person that observes a lot. I pay attention to everything, as they know. Uh, you know, from a limb down to whatever. Uh, my family are buried, uh, are buried right along the roadway that goes through the cemetery. Uh, it is getting tires and having to pick up a half a gallon or half a five gallon bucket of rocks because of the people that drive through the cemetery because the gate is closed. Uh, they do not drive ten miles an hour. They drive like it's a NASCAR race car, uh, deal. Uh, in the summertime, the dust goes clear to the top of the trees.
And that's the people that wind through it?
Through the, yeah, through the, uh, the southeast entrance and then I'll go to the north entrance or down, like he says, past his office to hit the five with fifteen. Now, as far as observing, when the gate has been open, um, I will probably observe, not so much now because of the weather. Summertime, springtime when people are out and about. Uh, I, the time that I spend out there, I will probably see twenty or thirty vehicles when the gate is open. I don't see anybody racing that. They drive like it's a normal Seward city street. I've never seen anybody burn tires, I've never seen anybody speed. Uh, I think the people that use that street know there's a hump at the other end, you know, so they're used to it. Uh, to get to Waverly Road or, and then go on to fifteen. Uh, but, uh, most of the people that I see that are disrespecting the cemetery or people from sixteen county. They are not out of counter people. Uh, they, like, uh, the gentleman says, they just wanna get to Waverly Road or the highway. So I thought that, uh, cemeteries were supposed to be, uh, respected, you know, especially that are there. Uh, you know, uh, if you're not gonna open the north gate, then lock your south gate. And that way the cemetery, they can use the fifteen or the, what I call the little north gate to get into the cemetery to visit our people. Otherwise, just lock the gate up. Uh, you know, and then during the funeral for Jeff or whatever, uh, they could call and the, the, the guys that work there could open it up for them, you know? Um, but as far as, uh, people speeding or whatever, uh, normally I will see during the summer months, twenty or thirty, just in the time that I'm there. Nobody is drag racing through that street, nobody. Now, I don't have any, uh, thing in the deal here, but I'm just telling you the what I notice and what I see.
So you have family that are buried right along there?
Right, right on the road as people run the rock road, right? As you come in that southeast, uh, entrance off of Fourth Street. And like I say, I go pick up a five gallon Menards bucket of rock because, nah, you know, that's how people treat. I've had people get angry because I, they want me to move my vehicle because I'm pulled off on the side a little bit, you know, getting out and doing, you know, whatever. Because they wanna drive on through because the gate, north gate's locked. They feel that they're entitled to drive through the cemetery and disrespect that anyway. Your rules you can have in print any way you want, nobody's paying attention to them. Nobody's driving ten miles an hour, simple as that. Uh, I think, uh, like you had said, uh, a gate on each of the small entranceway, a fence, whatever, is a fantastic idea and open the big gate. And as far as the hump wise, as far as on the street, uh, you've got bigger humps in this city and dips. You know, on your regular, normal city driving streets. I just drove one over there by the Old Dale's, uh, motel that boom goes down and around. So I mean, you've got, you know, there's nothing uniquely different. You wanna lower it and make it level, great, if not, leave it. You know, people will get used to it, people will know there's a big hump there, you know? But as far as anybody driving and drag racing and all that, I think the gentleman, uh, isn't being as truthful as he could be. So, uh, thank you very much for your time, I hope you take it in consideration. But something has to be done because people are disrespecting the cemetery.
Thank you, any questions? Seeing none, appreciate your comments? Anyone else like to speak on this issue, come forward at this time? Welcome.
I'm Kent Seleski, I work at Cemetery, um, thirty ninety-eight Old Mill Road, Seward. I'll just make this real short, um, I don't have much to say, I think John pretty much has, has covered everything. Um, this is, this has been an ongoing process. Um, I believe I was the first one that took over and then John stepped in to the cemetery. This gate, Memorial Day, the gentleman that was, that I took his position, um, was let go from the, from the city. So it was under my job to, I left the gate open. I left the gate open not knowing, I've never worked at a cemetery, I don't know what's going on. They gave me, you know, a month's worth of time with another guy and they said, here you go. So I left the gate open. Well, Zapkin come up, said we gotta shut the gate and I said, I'd like to keep it open. He says, we have to vote on it on the city board or on the, the cemetery board. I said, okay, that's fine. So since almost three years now, we've been dealing with this little tiny issue. And it's ridiculous that the gate's closed, um, for many reasons that he had stated. The other reasons are, if you do develop the, the, the east side of the cemetery, are we just still gonna keep that closed? Are we gonna come in through fifteen? Are we gonna go through town to get through the cemetery? What's, what's the purpose? There is no purpose. It's into the cemetery, we want people to come in there, as he stated. Um, we did, the, the cemetery vote board did vote. I know he said they didn't vote, but they did vote to keep this gate open for three years. Now, we didn't realize that had to go through the city council. So that vote didn't count because there was not enough people there apparently. So that's just my two cents, other than the fire hydrant on the other side of the fence. You do develop over there, you can't close that off. I mean, come on. So I'm, like I said, I'll keep this short and sweet and that's all I have for it. So we've been trying to change things out at cemetery, I feel like we get a lot of pushback because things are new now. Things are different. Twenty years ago, we, when we started, we're, we're typing in on a, on a typewriter out there. We finally got a new program, we finally got everything we need out there, this is the last thing. And we want it open, so that's all I have.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you for your comments? Anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue, please come forward, welcome.
Uh, Spencer Conrad, I'm, uh, the Seward County nine-one-one communications director. Um, the biggest issue that I've kinda learned since I started here with this gate is the police department and the deputies, they do traffic control along, uh, Highway fifteen right there, Waverly Road. Um, as they pull people over for traffic violations, the community members stop in that cutout of that gate, uh, to pull off of Waverly Road to get out of traffic. Now, should something happen in an emergency situation where one of those deputies or PD officers got into trouble and the closest officer is coming from that direction, they would have to go through a gate in order to get over to help them. Or go through the cemetery to get around to help them. Uh, because it's a perfect spot for the community members when they're getting pulled over for those traffic violations, to pull off the street and stop in that cutout right up against that gate. Um, so that would be my biggest concern that I've kinda learned in the ten months that I've been here with that, um, already. Um, just through the traffic calls that I've read and heard that occur on that street when they occur. Now, if we had an emergency to where somebody had to be coming from that direction to assist that officer at this time, no. But should it occur, I want that law enforcement entity to be able to get to their fellow officer, to be able to assist them as quickly as possible without having to go through the cemetery to get around or completely around the cemetery, depending on where they're at in the city.
Spencer, from an egress position into the nursing homes, what's your second way to get in if you can't get in on Fourth Street?
Uh, off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
I don't think there is one.
Chief, would you?
You would know, John, you take, you're up there all-
You have to go, uh, that one is the street right before the cemetery.
Grand Park?
Grand Park, you have to go to Grand.
Off the highway.
So you'd have to go all the way around.
I'm just asking because I spend a lot of time at the nursing homes.
Yeah, no, it's, it's those two, yeah. And we go there quite often.
I know, I run into you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, appreciate your comments? Anyone else wish to address the council, please come forward at this time? Welcome.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jeff Volzke, uh, twelve hundred six from the First Street. I am the new elected, uh, chairman of the cemetery board, uh, not by choice, but by vote.
If you got a ballast hole.
Um, there's some real good points here, uh, this, this evening and, uh, I'm gonna be great to sound, um, John, Greg has some great, great points. John, Kent, Dennis, of course, I know Dennis is out there quite a bit. Um, what I see personally is, uh, when we're in the cemetery, I'm out there quite a bit looking at a lot of things all the time. I see a lot of cars do come through there. They do come through and I kinda watch them. A lot of them will head out that south gate, that south gate that probably should be locked anyway.
Tiny gate.
The very tiny gate. And what they're doing, they're trying to get, get to, uh, Waverly Road. Uh, the concern, um, back some time ago when, when, uh, Kent from the cemetery was, was talking about, um, opening that gate, my concern was what's gonna happen someday when that, uh, that development comes through to the, to the, to the north? Um, how much traffic are we gonna get out in, on, on Fourth Street entrance? Uh, we did table it, as far as I, I remember, we did ta, uh, voted on that and it didn't pass because the city council already voted some time ago that it was, and we said that before, that as we already voted on that, that gate was gonna stay closed. So that kinda dropped right there and that's why this has been going on for some time. So, um, twenty up to the city council, as far as I'm concerned, I know you're, you've heard a lot of good arguments tonight. Um, it's your vote that will determine, uh, if that gate stays open or not. Um, that's all I really wanna give, get, get, uh, the point across to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you for your comments? Anyone else wish to speak on this, I don't, please come forward at this time?
One more point that I failed to, um, bring up to the new council members as well as to those incumbents. There will eventually, when, I do not know, be an entrance and an exit off of North Columbia. Cemetery owns all of the property over to the housing unit there. There are six lots that we sold. When I say we, the cemetery board sold those through the cit, city. There are three houses on the north side, three on the south side, where an entrance will be off of North Columbia. I cannot tell you when that final paving or that development to the east will, will take place. Nor can you probably tell, tell us or anyone else when the development's gonna be across the street on the north side of Waverly Road. So eventually there will be another entrance and exit to that fourth, to that Fourth Street side. If anyone has had, maybe hasn't seen the planning, the map planning that area, but there is eventually gonna be an entrance and an exit off of North Columbia.
Where that empty lot is on North Columbia, is that?
Yep.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a big gap there that'll never be sold because that's gonna be the entrance and exit to this, to this addition. It's, it's right now, it's called the Reynolds Shear Edition of the Seward Cemetery. That's currently where the veterans memorial is. But beyond that, we have not named that yet. There's going to be, there's a roundabout. The plan was eventually to put a columbarium in the, in the roundabout. A columbarium will be a, a, a unit that would hold cremated remains instead of having ground burial. They would be placed in a niche in this, in this area. Long-term plans for the city and Seward Cemetery. But there would be, there will be another entrance and exit eventually. When our budget is increased greatly, when is that might be?
Another discussion for another time.
Really helpful info, thank you.
How many issues do you wanna take up tonight?
That's all I have, just wanted to bring up that.
Well, that's a word, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Um, so unless anyone else wanted, Bob, did you wanna add something?
No, I'll, I'll just, everybody said something, so I guess.
Don't feel left out.
I don't know what else to say, it's all been said. Um, we were talking about the width of that road and looking back at the minutes with Greg. I know, uh, that road was funded, there, there was funded money for that road to go through there. So I think it had to be done by what the city's regulations are for that road. So it, it was paid with funds, uh, it wasn't, you know, budgeted to be put in. It was, it was state funded and federal funded road money that they probably used when they put in Fourth Street. So that's why it was made.
Be a road.
The width that it is to, to, for rules and regulations, instead of making it the width that the rest of the roads through the cemetery are with obstacle parking. Um, we talked about eventually when we developed that new part of that cemetery, which could, it could be fifty years down the, the road, because we got so much space still to fill before we start putting people out there, that we would probably put, you know, a wrought iron fence to match the other part of that along Waverly and then box that off. So it will look like what you're talking about in Lincoln, uh, eventually. We got so much space that we have to fill up first before we start moving people out there. Um, so, yeah, we have another road off of Columbia, eventually that'll be, it would be nice to have done. Uh, but we know that's gonna be a ways down the road when we still got spaces in Greenwood and, and the cemetery we have now. And we still have Anderson out there as well, um, to start opening up sections on that new side. You know, I, I get both sides, I get both sides of it. I understand, uh, when it was done in, in, uh, oh seven, why they did it for the reasons and, and, uh, and nobody likes change. I don't like change half the time either. Um, but it, it's good to revisit these things and like Greg and we've talked about.
But it, it's good to revisit these things and like Greg and we've talked about, i- is going through these and getting this thing uh put in, put down and, and, and then revisiting these every one to two years and making adjustments and everything like we do other things, so. Now it's in your guys' hands to, to figure this mess out.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
I'll just clarify, do you remember that issue, John?
Oh, yeah.
Cause that's in those minutes as well as some back and forth about how the road is funded and, and some other things. It's, it wasn't pretty, that meeting. It's not.
But when it really come down to it, because it was gonna be a change, and they thought once we opened it up, that's why it was gonna be a drag strip. But from what the guys are telling me, it's not.
Well, I wondered if, if is Mike here?
Oh.
Let's see here.
He's a bad man.
Hey, you're hiding. Can you, can you comment on the engineering of that road and whether there's any safety issues that you're aware of? Or whether or not that road is suitable to be opened or from an engineering perspective?
So, um, yes, indeed, the uh, from a circulation system standpoint and accordingly the number of, of conflicts you, you potentially have through, through any road closure and rerouting of traffic. Um, it is better to have a more interconnected circulation system, better to have more complete intersections and to allow drivers to essentially have multiple good alternatives from which to choose their path. And generally speaking, people will make decisions in their own um health and safety. And it does spread that out. So actually having it closed has a negative impact on safety uh through the other intersections. Columbian Pinewood is already very busy. It is impacted. Columbian Waverly, Grand Park and the highway. And these are all intersections that would undoubtedly benefit. It'd be subtle, hard to measure, but as a, as principle of traffic engineering, it would be better to have that uh gate at Fourth Street to Waverly open.
Do you remember, is it wide enough for two cars? I'm trying to.
It is, it is certainly wide enough. Yeah, certainly.
Both gates?
Yeah, for that style of uh street, our current circulation system requires twenty-eight feet back of curb to back of curb. And it's substantially larger than that. I, I haven't measured it recently. I don't recall exactly what that is.
No, I think it was set up for thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
With uh parking access to the side.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you for volunteering to come forward tonight. May you be joining the council for any further discussion?
My opinion is, um, from what, being on the council for a long time, and like I said, with that being a newly opened road, that was their big.